Briefing this morning, which will be all budget related. So we are glad that you're here. I believe I need a roll call. No, in that case, I'm going to turn the agenda over to our mayor.
Thanks. Thanks, Council President, Council members, and public and others who are here with us. We're going to talk about our budget situation. We've been laying the groundwork the last several months. Now we're moving into time to solve for the budget challenge that we have. So we're going to do an overview today. Alex is going to take on most of this with Matt and I and others available to other Cabinet members available to answer specific questions or provide some external comments. We've got some key external factors that we're dealing with. We'll review where we're at with our current deficit that we want to solve for in our mid biennium budget modification that will be presented to you soon. Want to review that you sent us a resolution with Council budget priorities that we are also utilizing as we put this budget together. And then talk about what our course corrections are thus far and some of the next steps to fill the gap. So Alex, take it away.
Thank you, and thank you, Council, for this opportunity. Real quick before I jump in, just want to reiterate that, so I'm coming up on a year in this role, and out of everything that we do, this has taken the vast majority of every waking and sometimes sleeping moment. So it's really been all budget all the time. HR and personnel might be a second place, but... So let's dive into some of the external factors, and some of this is going to be reviewed for you all. So jail cost is really the thing that has been the most kind of surprising external charge. You can see there on the right what our jail payments have looked like going back to 2021. And the pie chart there is a breakdown of the proportionate share. So the largest chunk being the county, as it's their jail, and they have a lot of the admin and non-duplicated costs, were the second largest there, and then the other jurisdictions kind of go down from there. We wanted to give you an additional visual going back to 2021. So what you're going to see first here is our expense increase. We have seen 120% or, yeah, about 120% expense increase since 2021, while over that same time, our average daily population has only increased about 54%. And then the last line here is what we know to be the county's overall jail expense increase, which comes in a little below 40%. So, you know, we don't necessarily have a look into all of their rationale for this, but this is what we know, and it obviously raises eyebrows significantly.
Yeah, question. Do we know if they're pushing off a lot of those expenses onto the feds, and that's how they're offsetting it?
Well, again, this is percentages, so their number is obviously a lot higher, but I don't think we do know that level of detail. I don't know, Maggie or Adam? Maggie's shaking her head. I don't think we have that level of granularity. These are the data points that we know with a high level of certainty. Right, Matt?
Yeah, we get quarterly ADP and fee charges from the jail as well as projections. It does break down by jurisdiction. We are trying to get a bit more information, and we're having dialogue with the county of what we think is valuable information, so we'll add this to the note.
Can I ask a question on this? Can we see a further history of the trends there? Because in 2023, something did happen that would cause our jail costs to go up, which is when drug offenses were known as a felony and it became a misdemeanor, we started bearing the cost on those arrests. And so I'd be curious to know, going further back, what that change in state law did to municipalities like us when it came to arrests.
Sure. Yeah. We can dig into that. Maggie or Chief Hall, anything you want to say to that right now, or do we dig into that and get back?
We can follow.
Okay. All right. So next, we just want to give you an overview of what's been happening in terms of revenue growth versus personnel costs. So first, going back to 2016, just want to show you, this is what we want it to look like. Here, you have the city's overall 3% revenue growth citywide, and the line of our citywide total cost of compensation is just right on. That's what we want to see. But as you can see in the lower right there, 2022, we had four new contracts. 2023, we had the most current new police contract. And so what we've seen since then is this: 2022, 23, 24, 25, and then projected 26. And so, you know, we just have a cost of compensation from those contracts that is vastly outpacing our 3% year-over-year citywide revenue growth. And that's really the ultimate driver. That was the main driver last year, and that's still, you know, in spite of the hole we closed last year, that situation exacerbates everything that we're facing. Here we have two graphs that I think are helpful. The top one is showing you a measure of growth. So the purple line there is average inflation nationwide, and then the green line is our city of Spokane year-over-year sales tax growth. And so basically, what that's showing you is that while sales tax growth has stagnated, as we all know, inflation growth has remained happening. You know, we haven't dipped down below that certainly. So that leads into the bottom chart here, which shows you the value of our sales tax dollar. And so going back to 2019, you see that we were at, you know, if we were bringing in 51.2 in sales tax, that has increased certainly to our 2026 projection, but down below the dotted line there is the actual value of that dollar. So even though sales tax increases, not at the rate we'd like, but continues to increase, the actual value of the dollar is lower than it was in 2016, which just hurts us. And then for reference, there in the middle, we have the 3% growth, just as a reference point.
Do we know if we've seen a reduction in sales tax producing businesses, jobs in the city of Spokane that might also contribute to this?
My understanding is we have not seen an overall reduction, but I don't know, Matt, if you have thoughts on that?
No. Yeah, I mean, that's accurate. We, I mean, while we've seen a reduction in sales tax activity from '24 to '25, we've talked about kind of where consumer confidence has been at for the past six to eight months. We are seeing some uptick on that, but that's kind of where we're at from the data that we're seeing right now.
I just wonder if after that spike in '21, you know, obviously, things were still very difficult with hiring employees and all that kind of stuff, if we saw some loss and just haven't gained it back?
Not that I know of.
Yeah, I certainly don't know of any actual loss. We're just not growing at the rate we want to, obviously, either in terms of sales tax generating businesses or the generated dollars themselves. So that brings us then to the breakdown of our, if those are kind of the external factors or a high-level summary of them, that brings us to our actual situation. So here, you have the breakdown in the general fund, 90% personnel, 10% non-personnel. And here on the next slide, we have a breakout of what that 10% looks like. So don't need to go through it all in a ton of detail, but the long and short of it is that these are basically non-negotiable costs. A lot of these are tied to contracts, a lot of them are tied to ILAs, you know, annexation payments, things like human services, a lot of which is passed through, things like that. That's kind of what makes up that 10% bucket. And then the rest of the general fund is the 90% personnel cost of compensation.
Just a point of clarification there. I don't know what happened with the Y-axis there, but it's not, those are starting at $2 million, going up to $16 million, not 20 to 1.6 billion. I don't, my slide shows something different, so I don't know what happened there.
So then...
So what's the total bat for that slide?
So that's just under 20 million, or that's just under 16 million. So that's non-personnel contract-related costs. That is the bulk of the 10% that is remaining.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to make sure. And the total there is about 16 million.
Correct.
So then that brings us to the current picture. We are facing a deficit of approximately $13 million in the general fund. Last year, as you all know, we worked really hard, took low-hanging fruit cuts, and more than that even. And Matt and I, over the past months, have been meeting with every department and talking through what further reductions could look like. And, you know, spoiler alert, it's not pretty, and it's not even feasible in most cases, just in terms of how close to the bone we already are. What you see there on the right is a pie chart that shows you the breakdown, some rough buckets, but the green is the public safety departments, and the rainbow colors are everything else. And that does include some contractual dollars in there. So part of that 10% is reflected in the pie chart, but for the most part, that is showing you personnel breakdown.
Would you just run across those, what those are again? I'm a little bit farther away from the screen.
Yeah, so...
Would appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep. So the first one you see there, I believe, is streets, the 4%, and then the kind of brown is support. That's our internal service department.
So that would be human services, IT, legal...
HR.
HR.
Finance.
Okay.
Yep. You've got the light blue, which is library, or sorry, that one is elected. You've got development, which is the parts of Steve's shop, planning and development that are general fund-supported.
As well as engineering.
As well as engineering.
Has a revenue source that offsets.
Yep. The dark green there is the elected. That's the 2%, so that's mayor and council. And then the light blue is library, and the purple is parks.
When you say that's the elected, do you mean just the elected positions or all of the elected offices?
No. The elected budgets. Yeah. So the general fund is approximately 270 million, and so that means the deficit we're facing is about 5% of that. And as you can see on the chart, public safety departments make up about 190 million of that total. The bottom line is that we can't close the deficit on cuts alone. We've dug through, and, you know, impacts to recruitment, if you make a cut in HR, impacts to all sorts of things, if you make a cut in legal, our need at that point to rely on outside contracts for a lot of things. We're just, we are facing the stark reality that we will not be able to close this on cuts alone within the general fund. And certainly, I think we all agree that our public safety departments are not going to be able to sustain the level of cuts, especially given the proportion that they make up of the general fund.
Alex, just real quick, what percentage, if you know, of the public safety is overtime costs? Are there anything that we're looking at to try to mitigate for that?
The short, the answer to that is yes. We're absolutely looking in both police and fire at mitigations, and hopefully some good news on the way in that regard. I'm not sure about a percentage, Matt, or either the chiefs. Any thoughts on that?
A little bit north of 10, I would say, is total overtime budget, but roughly thereabout.
And obviously, as we've communicated to you all earlier this year, you know, we have the nuance in fire, where a lot of that is unavoidable with the current contracts. So that's, of course, with our ongoing bargaining with Local 29. That's something that we're trying to remedy.
And I would also say that PD has done an excellent job at mitigating the overtime costs in 2025 and looking to replicate that going into 2026 as well.
So still trying to zero in on what we can actually propose for 2026 in terms of overtime budgeting, but cautiously optimistic that there is some good news on the way there. Other questions before I move on?
And just to add, I mean, I want to remind everybody, the second recruit class that went through for fire, obviously, per Julie's last conversation when we were here last, said really getting a well-staffed relief pool is the cornerstone of mitigating fires overtime, and that was why we made that investment in the second recruit class for 2025 and have another one planned for early 2026 as well.
Yep.
And just to clarify, so in public safety departments, you've got the general fund support that goes to fire and police, as well as courts, the OPO, defenders and prosecutors.
And the central municipal court.
And the municipal court, yeah. So I think that's a useful way for people to understand that such a high percentage, people think general fund, what the heck is that? Is that just the other stuff? But it's actually critical pieces of our responsibility to our residents.
And just not to beat a dead horse, but kind of what I said about, you know, the conversations Matt and I have been having with departments, everywhere we look, everyone's operating at basically record lows in terms of the personnel capacity they have. I mean, legal hasn't been this low in decades. You know, certainly, HR and civil service are running lean, and, you know, the priority of needing to do another fire academy, needing to continue recruiting in police, let alone all the other places where we have critical personnel, obviously, cuts to that mean we can't do those recruitments in the same way. So over and over again, we've come up against, you know, these very interlinked, if we make a cut here, we lose out on all this other stuff. So doesn't mean no cuts, and we're still working through that, but that's why, you know, the headline really is this, that cuts alone, even cuts majority, probably don't get us there.
In those departments, do we know how workloads compare with, for better or worse, with other jurisdictions, for example?
I'm not sure if we have that specific analysis, but we could work on that and get back to you. Anecdotally, based on talking to other jurisdictions, we compare very favorably in terms of the amount of work we're getting out of the numbers.
Favorably, meaning more work?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. The bang for the buck that we're getting, yeah.
Alex, when you do public safety again, could you actually pull out the courts? I don't think people understand or acknowledge how much it takes to run the court system that we have. It's just kind of all lumped in there.
Yeah.
So I think it'd be a good visual, your understanding, how that plays into the whole public safety pie.
Yeah, absolutely, we can do that. And of course, there, you know, we make a cut there, we can't, you know, bring prosecutions under our obstruction ordinance. We can't, you know, there's a lot of interlinked things there as well.
There's also some pending increases in caseload standards that would drive us to either make those personnel investments to keep our caseload standards compliant or would result in cases being dropped and not prosecuted.
Yeah, and I think we all know that the last thing the community wants to see is us declining to prosecute based on capacity, which, to Mayor's point, we are going to be close to bumping up against that regardless with the changing caseload standards. All right. So what we have really been doing is trying to take the council priorities that you all passed as a roadmap. So I just wanted to kind of go through those briefly and some of the things that we're working on, because I think we're really, you know, arm-in-arm on those. So reserve funds, you know, goes without saying, we are absolutely focused on restoring reserves, made some pretty significant efforts to try to do that last year, and are continuing to be focused on that this year. We're also, of course, looking at the big picture of how do we align our reserve amounts and our reserve practices with the best long-term strategy and best practice from other jurisdictions. On labor agreements, obviously goes without saying that we will be fulfilling our obligations, but also, as we mentioned earlier, working with our labor partners to bring that compensation back into alignment with projected revenue growth. You know, that's really the, probably the single biggest thing that got us here, so got to right that ship. Council's priority around public safety capital is in perfect alignment with what we're doing. We're trying to be really strategic and look at places where we could consolidate or reconfigure or whatever with debt and with how we're allocating public safety capital dollars. As several of you know, we've been in meetings just this week on animal control, working with our consultant on a realistic path forward, and really appreciate council support, particularly Councilwoman Cathcart, having such a passion for that and working with us on that. And as we said in that meeting yesterday, you know, really trying to center our community's priorities around the welfare of the animals and the transparency of the operation and all of those things. On the Ombudspur's office, we're looking at options to create certainty for the OPO budget and hope to have a proposal related to that for you all. I know that's been a priority for all of us for a long time. On city facilities, again, as you know, we've had meetings with you all to share some of these pieces, but we're evaluating our entire real estate portfolio. We're looking at properties that have already made it through the real estate review committee process, other properties that might in the future, taking a strategic look with JLL's help at everything having to do with our properties, just really trying to have a completely open mind and look at everything. And then, of course, the background of that has been what do we do with upcoming compliance requirements for the Clean Buildings Act. John Snyder and others from finance and various departments have been looking at our options there, and we're encouraged that there, it looks like there are some grant funding pathways that can help with a lot of that, certainly help with the planning and evaluation side. So working on that. As far as workforce planning, I know council included in their priority the overall FTE count piece, and, you know, I know you already know this, but last year, for the first time since the 2008 recession, we had an overall FTE reduction. I think we're probably on track to see that again. But either way, being responsible around FTE counts is a top priority that we share. And as I mentioned, looking for anywhere that we can streamline, reduce, and do so responsibly. Language access, certainly apropos to your priority on this, aiming for full implementation no later than the first of 2027, but hopefully long before that. And there have been good updates. I think we're hoping to get before council soon to do kind of a joint mayor-council workshop for more of a public audience about how to use the website, and certainly get city staff up to speed on how to use that translation resource. And then last but not least, arts, that priority came through loud and clear from you all, and obviously, we share that. So working through right now the finishing touches of a contract proposal that will be a two-year extension for Spokane Arts, and at the same time, working closely with the Arts Commission on what our staffing plan will be for them, and helping to make sure they are meeting their statutory requirements as a commission. So last but not least, we just kind of wanted to leave you with the things that are already underway. So we estimate that we can probably get around $1 million from some centralization and duplication elimination. I apologize for being vague, but some of those things are not 100% ready for primetime, but the number, we're pretty confident that we can get to about $1 million in savings through this. Mainly, it's just sensitivities around when and how our employees find out about things that affect them, but we're pretty confident that we can do some of that stuff and get at some savings. We are targeting about $2 million from reducing personnel costs. The mayor has decided and will be announcing shortly that non-represented employees will not have the opportunity to take leave buyouts this year. That's an authority that she has under the SMC. Obviously, can't dictate that to our represented employees, but we will be approaching some of those bargaining units and making that ask of them. No idea how that will go. And then vacancy reductions and other things. So more to come soon on that, but we think we can probably get to about $2 million. And then debt, we think through refinancing and restructuring, we can probably get to about 3.5. So there's a lot more that's not necessarily ready for primetime yet, but in the next days and weeks, we'll be previewing that for you all while in advance of our October budget study session, and certainly in advance of submission of the mayor's proposed budget.
On the refinancing and the restructuring of the debt obligation, so we saved $3.5 million this year, what's the total cost that it ends up costing us over the length of the restructure?
I mean, we tie ourselves to the Fed rate when we do internal borrowing. So when you say what's the cost, it actually is a net zero because we're paying ourselves the interest. It's an investment gain for us. But generally, the interest rate that the department itself is paying is, right now, going to be about probably 4.75, based on the lower interest rate. We take a interest rate plus 50 basis points, and that's what we charge ourselves. So we don't go out to commercial. We do, it's an internal loan to ourselves.
And I just want to add, I appreciate Matt stays on top of, you know, there's always some uncertainty built in to what's happening at the federal level, but we concurred that the interest rate cut was likely to happen. That wasn't a big secret to anybody, and so he made adjustments prior to that. That wasn't a big secret to anybody, and so he made adjustments prior to that. So keeping our own portfolio well managed is a key part of this.
So what other questions can we answer?
If you're doing the math, you can see we're not quite halfway there yet to the $13 million that we have to get to. So just didn't want to hide that yet, but also wanted to make it clear. We believe we'll get there. We'll discuss various options with council members before we put the final budget proposal together for you. We want to hear your ideas about that before we put the final proposal together to hand over to you. And then, as you could see, we, again, I didn't want to leave people with the sense that nothing has happened yet or we haven't made any progress or that we're not going to figure out how to close this gap. But as you can see, we still have a ways to go.
Thank you for all this. On the first slide of priorities was talking about labor agreements. Was the V-RIP obligation included in that as part of these calculations?
No, V-RIP was not included. Obviously, that's a cost add. We understand that that's a request. I think we need to explore that further, what the impact is. We're trying to develop some solutions to that.
But that, yeah, any of that would be over and above the $13 million.
Are we looking to clawback dollars that we've put out for potential grants, such as the money that would have gone to cops, et cetera?
That's a good question. I don't believe that there's any plan around clawbacks. And, I mean, we're talking pretty small numbers.
So we're still going to go out to an RFP to spend those dollars?
That's my understanding.
It seems like that'd be a low-hanging fruit, a place to save, you know, half a million dollars.
We'll take it into consideration with Chief Hall.
Any other questions? We know there's lots of uncertainty around Shrek that's kind of floating around out there. I just want to call that out because there's stuff out there in the atmosphere about that and how we go forward, because we are all about public safety for our community. And I guess there's a lot of moving targets around that, which is why it hasn't really come out to full discussions yet and what that looks like with the county. So I know that's on your plate.
Yeah.
And so we look forward to that discussion, really delving into the information.
I can make a couple of comments about it. We have engaged in both formal mediation and informal mediation with the county on the equitable apportionment of the two revenue streams. So there's the sales tax that we all pay for that 911 system. And there's the excise tax that we all pay. And the state law allows us to capture our share of those. And the dispute is over what our share is. And we have maintained that since that funding is for emergency response, call-taking dispatch of 911 calls, that that should be tied to call volume. And the city is more or less, I don't have these numbers exactly right, but more or less 55% to 57% of the calls, police and fire that come in.
Which, of course, was the basis for the user fees they were charging.
And they were charging user fees based on that call volume. The county has maintained that our share should be based on population, which would be more like 42% of those revenues. If you looked at how the revenues are generated into the city and the county, we are closer maybe to 48% of sales tax revenue generated in the city. So you can see some different benchmarks there. Obviously, we think 42 is not the right one. And so we have not been able to come to agreement on that, continuing to work on that. But that's a key part of putting our primary public safety answering point together. And we are also working on the period of time between we would turn on our private, our P-SAP and that transition period. And in that regard, we are negotiating with Shrek. And that is a contracting issue in which frankly, we have been unable to see eye to eye on the kinds of charges that they want to charge us for that. We suggested status quo for what we have been paying. That's not acceptable to them. So we are at a bit of an impasse in both places with both Shrek and with the county and discussing a variety of ways to move forward on that. One thing I think that's really important, it's a complicating factor, just go ahead and throw it out there, is that Shrek is changing its CAD system. And so their perspective has been, we're changing the CAD system. This is our timeline, and this is the cost we want to charge you. And that's, there's nothing you can do about it. And furthermore, they've even suggested that they would stop taking fire calls January 1st. And we have strenuously submitted that that is not in the best interest of public safety, that we need to work out this financial model and we need to have a thoughtful, cautious, safe transition to our own public safety answering point. This is not unprecedented. There are other regions that have more than one public safety answering point. It's a geo-fenced model. So once it's up and running, the 911 call in the city comes into the city system, the 911 call in the county goes into Shrek, and the mutual aid that has always been the basis of our police and sheriffs and other law enforcement working together and the mutual aid among the fire districts, our fire department, the fire professionals, will no doubt continue as it always has. So that piece of it, we're not concerned about. But getting this financial governance model straight is something we absolutely have to do this year. We have to do this on behalf of the residents of Spokane and on behalf of certainty for the residents of the city and the county.
And Mayor, I just asked that of you, thank you for that explanation. I just want to be very clear to our citizens that services will not be disrupted as we work through this transition. Police will still show up, fire will still show up, and your services will continue. So let's make that very clear to our citizens as we negotiate how this will play.
And there's no disagreement amongst this group here that that will happen. People will not be without service.
Absolutely.
One last thing that I just want to leave you with before, assuming there are no other questions, before we leave the budget topic, is obviously, it is top of mind for us to try to not be in this position again next year. And so I just want to clarify, you know, while the personnel cost of compensation is a big driver of us getting here, that, of course, was not unexpected. We were able to plan for that. And those increased costs even further next year are baked into our budget planning. Really, if everything had continued like it looked in November, December of last year, we would not be in this position. So it's the surprising external factors that really have driven the $13 million we face today. It's the jail cost and largely the stagnant sales tax revenue numbers. So with that said, very focused on how do we not end up in this position again next year? And there's a little bit, I think, of reason for optimism. The finance team probably will kick me for saying it, but, you know, sales tax has rebounded a little bit. There's always a chance that we do better going into next year. And certainly, we're going to plan for the worst. So just want to assure the council and the public that everything we're doing is trying to plan for not being in this position next year.
Any other questions or comments around the budget issued, Councilwoman Cathcart?
Yeah, are we working off of a six-year projection as we're making these decisions to know that it isn't creating an imbalance or is hopefully creating positive economic outcomes for the next biennial and the biennial after that? Do you want to speak to that, Matt?
Yeah, I mean, I think you all know me well enough to know that I'm trying not to look at just the ground underneath my feet, but also looking at the horizon. The long-term driver, as we are developing, putting those inputs in, it's really our personnel cost. That's what's going to drive it one way or the other. And so with those contracts in place, we have got to get back to the ground level that we talked about earlier, where it's in line with that 3%, and it's also in line with council's priorities. As the external factors for sales tax or property tax or what have you, I mean, again, it's pretty simple to say that 3% is our baseline. I think we're going to be climbing back up. And that is generally our baseline trajectory for revenue. We won't know what's going to happen with inflation, right? We won't know what's going to exactly happen with sales tax. That's our most volatile revenue source. But we are a personnel-centric organization, as you saw on the screen earlier. 90% of those costs are personnel. And the other 10, the vast majority of the other 10% are contractual obligations with other jurisdictions, primarily the county, PDAs, animal control, I mean, all of the things that we are contractually obligated. So there's no surprises there, there's no meat left on the bone there. There's very little travel or non-discretionary spend, as you might label it, within the budget. So it's pretty easy to project those out. It's getting our personnel costs back to a reasonable rate.
With personnel, I mean, obviously, it's a, you know, we're only one-half that equation in those negotiations. We can, you know, suggest 3%, but we might end up in mediation, and it could be something way higher because our labor partners don't agree on a 3% cap. And so how do we control for that as we're planning ahead? You know, with the unknown of how negotiations might go and potentially other policies that might get negotiated through that could have other costs. Healthcare is a great example. We haven't talked about healthcare today, but that's a great example.
Yeah, I mean, I think going into those negotiations with the long-term health of, financial health of the city is the primary focus and should be the primary focus of anybody that's at the negotiating table that represents the city. And then, again, who ultimately approves the contract, which is the legislative body. So I think that needs to be our focus. And as we've all said before, we're talking about overall cost of compensation, and you alluded to the fact earlier. But that's insurance costs, that's other things that are outside of just COLA growth. Those are specialty add-to-pays that cost the city money. And we have got to go into it eyes wide open. And we're examining all of those contracts, even the ones that aren't currently being negotiated, so that we can develop a strategy for those when we go into them.
I'll just add, I think that we have room for improvement too in our management of our building and land assets. As you know, I'm also concerned about some of the lease arrangements that were made. So to the extent that we can pull out of those or we're going to age out of those, especially for a city, we're going to be here. Public safety is going to be here, you know, we're a tenant when it comes to public safety. We have a landlord for our police department and for our public safety. We may need to consider that we should be the masters of our own destiny by having those departments in a building that we own and maintain and having that asset under our control. So those are the kinds of things we're looking at and that we're going to be talking to you about. And I think that we have some room there for improvement as well. That will help our long-term picture. Because it's a little bit of a, when you're a price taker, you know, it's, here's your price for animal control. Here's your price for the jail. Here's your price for our 911 towers. Here's your price for things that we are not managing ourselves. That is, that's a vulnerability for our residents and taxpayers that we want to mitigate against.
And I'll just say, so from the council's point, working with Kate and with Matt before he left, council's being very specific of fiscal impacts when we're writing these ordinances and what that looks like. I know there's a lot of things we have passed that we didn't get the true fiscal impact and how it would impact the budget that we are looking at. And we are very cognizant of that at this time going forward. When we start putting stuff into law, what is the price tag that's attached to that ordinance and how it'll impact the overall general fund? That's definitely on council's side, our responsibility as the fiscal agent for this organization. Any other comments going forward? Well, this was depressing, but I'm glad that, I'm thankful for the administration, for the transparency of what's going on and for our citizens to know that, you know, where we're at and where we're moving and how we are really trying to approach this. And also for our employees to know what's going on too. I think they are a partner in all of this and delivering our services. So with that, if there's nothing else, we've got something else going on today. This meeting is adjourned. We are now going to go into executive session for 30 minutes for the purpose of labor negotiations and pending litigation. There will be no further action taken when we return. We'll be using this room for our executive session. So I will ask everyone to leave the room. And thank you all for attending today.